Welcome to the January 5, 2017, meeting in the Murfreesboro City Council. Mr. Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for our city. Most of all, we just thank you for an opportunity to see another day. We ask you to bless our country. We ask you to bless the president that's going to take place in the next couple of weeks. We just ask you to be with us and guide us. Lord, bless Murfreesboro. Bless us in 2017 to make right decisions for our city, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, we have a ceremonial item to read through tonight. I'm going to try to make it through this. So we have an open seat tonight, and you'll see Vice Mayor Young's fire helmet that's sitting there. We lost Vice Mayor Young a couple of weeks ago, and I know many of us served with Doug for many, many years, and he's been a role model to this city. His legacy that he's left will be felt for many, many years to come. And I think that cannot be any more apparent than the way that his service was and the amount of people that came to really just pay honor to Doug. So Doug, one of the things that we can say is one of the absolute most selfless people that you could ever meet. And it's my pleasure tonight, we've prepared a resolution that we want to read and present to his family. So I'm going to ask Doug's family if y'all will please come up. We have a resolution that we've prepared that the City Council will be adopting tonight. Resolution 17R01 honoring Vice Mayor Douglas Brock Young for his dedicated service to the city of Murfreesboro. Whereas Douglas Brock Young was elected in 2002 to the Murfreesboro City Council and as Vice Mayor in 2014. Whereas Doug was a leading advocate for the funding, planning, and development of the Public Safety Training Center and was honored during a groundbreaking November 8, 2016, at the former Franklin Heights Housing Complex by naming the facility the Douglas Young Public Safety Training Facility. And whereas Doug was the son of the late Andrew Martin Young and Molly Brock Young, the husband of Susan Hanson Young, the father of Julie Young Clark, Andrew Young and Matthew Young, the very proud grandfather of Catherine and Anna Clark, Reese Lee and Ella Young and Mason Moore. And whereas Vice Mayor Young was a lifelong citizen of Murfreesboro, was educated at Hobgood Elementary School, graduated from Murfreesboro Central High School as senior class president in 1967. Doug earned a bachelor's degree from Middle Tennessee State University in 1971 and was commissioned as a second lieutenant in the U.S. Army and served in military intelligence from 1971 to '73. Whereas Doug gave tirelessly of his time and energy to organizations such as the MTSU Foundation, the MTSU National Alumni Association, Rutherford County Arthritis Walk, Boy Scouts of America, Tennessee Municipal League, and Downtown Murfreesboro Business Association. His professional memberships included the National Federation of Independent Business, Middle Tennessee Floor Covering Association, and the World Floor Covering Association. Whereas Doug made a huge impact in shaping Murfreesboro as his vision for Murfreesboro's future was always large and bright. Doug loved his service on the Murfreesboro Planning Commission and served as the vice chair. Doug led by example and was a graduate of Leadership Rutherford, the Citizens Police Academy, and the Citizens Fire Academy. Doug was always the most positive and friendliest of people. You could always count on his friendship. These personal traits translated into a life of service dedicated to his family, church, business, and community. His contributions to Murfreesboro are legendary. And they're therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, the mayor and council shall proclaim January 5, 2017, as the day to honor Vice Mayor Douglas Brock Young, a remarkable man for his many accomplishments and his contributions to his community that will be felt for many generations, and to celebrate his family and to applaud his service to Murfreesboro. Section 2, the resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage and adoption, the public welfare and the welfare of the city requiring it. Any comments? Can I please have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Wright, we're going to vote by acclamation. All those in favor?
Aye.
There are several of, obviously, Susan and Julie and Matt, there are several of Doug's friends. We have Judge Hall and Brenda McFarland, Judge Ben Hall, John Harney, who's here. So we want to thank y'all for coming out. And Judge McFarland, I think you have a challenge that you wanted to give to the City Council for this Saturday, don't you?
Oh, okay. I didn't know I was going to get the honor. He kind of dropped that one on me. He does that to y'all, too, I bet. Surprise. Well, that's good. I'd be glad to do this. Every year, they've been doing it for like 15 years, they have a polar plunge at the sports con. And you take some goods, some food, and it's for the food bank, I think Rutherford County Food Bank. And I know Doug and I started the second year they had it. I didn't do it the first, but after the second year, we would do it every year. Unless, one year I was sick, one year I was out of town, our wives were there supporting us on the side. Susan was there every time. And in the last few years, your honorable mayor has been extremely faithful. So I thought he was going to issue the challenge, but he gave me the honor. So we give you a challenge to be there, and we're doing it this year in memory of Doug. He was very faithful, regardless of the weather. One year, it was, I think, air temperature 32, water 36. And maybe similar to that this year. So if you can make it, we'd love to have.
Thank you.
While Shane's returning, I'll make a very brief comment. And yeah, we've got fond memories of watching Mr. McFarland and Doug jump into the pool together. They always jumped close to the ladder. They were smart. But Doug's, there's one thing that even though he's not with us tonight, his footprints are very deep in Rutherford County and Murfreesboro, and it's not because of his size or his weight, they're everywhere. And his fingerprints are on everything that has taken place in Murfreesboro in the last few years. And the fire training facility, I think, is the perfect example of how his name will be a legacy in Murfreesboro for many, many, many years to come. So certainly, we mourn with the family, but tremendous loss. And we'll go through the process of trying to replace Doug, and the process sounds like it's going to be somewhat challenging, but the real challenge will be for the person who tries to fill the shoes, because that's going to be a humongous challenge. So thank you, guys, for being with us tonight.
Amen. For, you know, I've worked with young people for many years, and one of the things that I think's important for that next generation is to have people that are fleshing out their life before them, so that they can know how to live a life, how to live their lives. You couldn't do any better than to know and hear people talk about Doug and the impact on their lives. Known him since we were boys. Got a chance in those last few days to tell him what he had meant to me as a mentor, to me. He was a couple of years ahead of me in school, but have always looked to him for wisdom and insight. He approached every issue with his heart and his head. And every decision that I made related to political or public service, I'd go to Doug and ask him what he thought. And he always gave me good wisdom. And so, young people, if you want to know what it is to be a public servant, look at this life. You won't find a better one.
When I, a huge part of my life, I feel a part of my body is missing because I sat next to Doug. And when it was time to vote, he had hit me. I won't have any bruises on my legs anymore, I can tell you that. He would hit me really hard. And then I'll vote, and then he'd say, "What'd you do that for? Why'd you vote that way?" I said, "Doug, that's how I felt." And he said, "Well, it wasn't right." So I'm going to miss that. You know... I'm just lost for words. I'm just, I'm going to miss the good times. But he's in a better place, and it's like when my mom died. I wasn't ready, but she was ready. So I wasn't ready for Doug to leave, but Doug was ready, so.
Yeah, well, I'll just say a quick word and just to kind of echo what Eddie said, but also I just want to mention to you guys, the family out there especially, that you've watched enough of these, probably know that I'm fairly passionate about things and kind of wear my feelings on my sleeve a little bit sometimes. But I'll tell you that Doug was always the very first one to just, the first word that really comes to my mind is just encouragement. He would just, you know, every time I talked to him about something, and I'd be frustrated, he would just say, "Man, you just keep doing what you're doing," and, you know, and just encourage me, and that really meant a lot.
Well, half the reason I'm sitting on City Council now is because of Doug Young. Before Doug passed, I came by to see him. Story, I do not wear ties. And Doug's laying there, and he says, "You see that tie behind you? Grab one of those." I said, "Doug, I don't wear ties." He says, "Grab one of those ties." The tie I wore to the funeral was Doug's tie, and I did it in honor of Doug. And I'd say to the family, "He will be truly missed." Thank you.
Greater love hath no man than this, a lady on his life for his friends. And I think that we all can say, I was sitting here thinking that, you know, from Chris Bratcher to Ron, to Bill, to Doug, to Toby, to Mayor Bragg, that I've been able to sit up here with six remarkable men. And there will not be a day that goes by that I don't look back at December 18th and think about Doug. And I think that being involved in this city and knowing how much that he loved Murfreesboro, that we will continue to be trying to live up to the standards that he set for us. So we are proud for what Doug has done, but more importantly, we're, we love you guys as a family, because that's what we are. So thank you so much for sharing him with us. We would like to keep Doug's helmet up here for the rest of the City Council meeting tonight, and I will bring that by to you guys, but I think we'd like to have one more, one more meeting with his memory up here with us. It'll be up here with us for a long time, but it'll be good to have that to sit with us. Thank y'all. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda.
If there's no questions or comments about the consent agenda, we'll move for approval.
Have a motion and second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have three sets of meetings. You've got the November 15, 2016, special meeting with the MED Power Board, November 17, 2016, regular meeting, and the December 1, 2016, special meeting.
Say it.
Councilman Wade, Councilman LaLance.
Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16OZ59, a reason on an area located along Florence Road to Light Industrial, LI District 2016-453.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16OZ62, to rezone an area located along Old Fort Parkway to Plan Unit Development, PUD District, Old Fort Plaza, Mirihar Bethai, applicant 2016-437.
Move for approval.
Motion and second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade? Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16O64, to amend Murfreesboro City Code, Appendix Zoning, Sections 9, 25, and 31 pertaining to seasonal fireworks sales, temporary mobile recycling centers, and temporary vendors.
It's one of the best things we're going to pass tonight, and I move for approval.
Second. Motion and second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16O65, amending Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 31-1, 33-32, 33-50, regarding the use of step systems.
Rick, are you concerned about the step systems? Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into first readings and consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager about approval of a franchise agreement with Atmos Energy for retail sale of natural gas inside the city of Murfreesboro.
Mayor, this is first reading on renewal of a franchise for distribution of natural gas throughout the city with Atmos Energy. It is a 10-year agreement with two five-year extensions at the option of the city to move further into the future. There are no major changes in this franchise agreement. Atmos will continue to pay the city 5% of the gross revenues on the natural gas sales throughout the community. It amounts to nearly $1 million a year in the budget. If you remember, the very cold winter of 2014, it was slightly more than $1 million a year. There were some technical changes to clean up a few things that have changed in the 20 years that this ordinance has been in place, but as a whole, they were minor in nature. I need to thank City Attorney Craig Tindall for his patience in staying with this and putting this together. It's been a long time in process, and we recommend your approval of this continued franchise with Atmos Energy.
Okay, we need to consider on first reading ordinance 16O68 granting a franchise to Atmos Energy Corporation and Texas and Virginia Corporation for the distribution of natural gas and for the installation and maintenance of mains, pipes, pipelines, distribution lines, and other equipment necessary or incidental to distribution of said gas upon, across, along, and under the highways, streets, avenues, roads, alleys, lanes, and other public grounds of the city of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, Tennessee, in order to furnish gas service within the city to its inhabitants.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into new business, and we'll consider for approval or renewal or certificate of compliance for retail liquor store for Marybin Patel, Nickin S. Patel, Gina G. Patel, and Vipal A. Patel at University Package Wine and Liquor Warehouse, 2834 Middle Tennessee Boulevard.
Mayor, every two years, the liquor stores have to get a renewal of their certificate of compliance. This particular compliance, this particular application is in order, and we do recommend approval for us to send it to the state.
Are we required by state law, or is that an ordinance that requires us to do that? I mean...
ABC has a form for us to complete, and that's part of the liquor store's ability to keep their license. If they don't appear on your agenda and get approved, then they get penalized by the state until they get that done. I'm not sure what's, what requires them to do it as far as state law, but they have to do it in order to stay in business.
Is this something that we might could consider doing like we did the fireworks sales and temporary mobile recycling centers and have that something that could be approved by your department rather than having to come to council, or is this...
I'd have to read the form. I know the mayor has to sign it. It has to be read by council. I think if he doesn't sign it, four members of council has to sign it. I'm thinking, without looking at the form...
I'm just looking for efficiency, and I think we've already done some, and this kind of looks like this similar situation.
I think we can certainly take this one up tonight, since it's on the agenda, and then we'll look at the state statute and see what it does. And if we can find the efficiency there, we'll certainly, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah, good idea. Well, after that, I'll move for approval.
Motion and second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Fire and Rescue Chief to approve a contract with a parent company to service construction manager at risk for the police and fire and rescue public safety training facility. Chief Fokes.
Mayor and members of council, this is a contract between the city of Murfreesboro and the parent company to be the construction manager at risk for the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility. The parent company was selected, and there was a total of three requests or three proposals that were submitted when we published the request for qualifications. The council previously approved going to an RFCSB process for this and doing the construction manager at risk at an earlier meeting. We evaluated all of the proposals. The purchasing director, Mr. Boyer, Assistant City Manager Crumley, myself, Chief Durr, and Deputy Chief Tooms from the Fire Department were involved in the interview process. We interviewed all three candidates that submitted proposals and voted to select the parent company as the best construction manager for this project at this particular time. It is a, we felt like that the construction management is going to be crucial to this project just because of the complexity of the project. There's going to be numerous moving parts to this project. I think many of you have seen the concept drawings of the training center. We're keeping five of the current buildings, and we're planning on rehabbing those and utilizing those for training, as well as a five-story drill tower, a barn mod, a driving pad, a canine facility that would ensure accreditation for our canines from the Police Department, as well as some storage areas and a classroom administration building on that site. So it's a very complex project. We're looking also to that construction manager at risk to facilitate doing some, being able to keep some of the materials on-site to build a base. Our fire trucks are extremely heavy, and so when you're building a driving pad for those to drive on, we anticipate being able to crush the brick and the block from this and using that as some of the driving pad and some of the base for the drill tower as well. And so it's a very complicated project, and we feel like that using a construction manager at risk and using the parent company for this project would benefit the city immensely. I'll take any questions that anyone has.
There's no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Well, now, I consider recommendations of the Chief of Police and Chief of Fire and Rescue, aid to approve purchases of 700 megahertz tower site infrastructure, dispatch consoles, and two-way radios and accessories. Chief.
Honorable mayor and City Council, first, I wanted to thank you for passing on consent agenda, the Pharaoh scanner. I just want to bring your attention what that does, is that's a 3D scanner that's going to be used on our roadways for major, for fatalities. And just what we have today is that scanner takes three hours to take 120 points. The new scanner will do 3 million points in 20 minutes. So what took us hours to clear roadway is now going to take us about half the time. So thank you for that, and it's really a needed technology. And we're also going to use that for critical infrastructure, doing schools, and also for any type of critical scene. So thank you very much on behalf of the agency. With that, I'll move into the, into our, into our item. The 700 megahertz tower and infrastructure is our two-way radios and our dispatching system and the tower. It's going to provide the fifth site for our radio system, and right now, that's going to strengthen up the east side of the town where we still, where we're going to have, where we're going to have blackout periods. This was taken off our state, off the state contract for radio systems, and the state has utilized Motorola for the THP. Nashville's gone off that system, Laverne and Smyrna, and off that state contract, Motorola even discounted it further than what the state had allotted for it. Do you folks have anything to add?
Yes. As Chief Durr mentioned, this is a Motorola contract. We are currently heavily invested with Motorola, and although the state, we had several options listed on the state contract to be able to purchase radios from different manufacturers. The Motorola system, the city already has multiple mobile and portable radio systems, as well as the infrastructure for the current VHF system at all of our tower sites is Motorola. And those type of systems essentially almost speak their own language, similar to cellphones. If you've got an AT&amp;T phone and you try to use it on a Verizon network, it's not going to work very well. And those, those issues that we have within those systems working together, you lose a lot of functionality of the radios when you go with a different brand of radio and different brand of equipment when you've got the backbone of the infrastructure there. Additionally, at the dispatch center, when new police headquarters opens, the consoles that are there will be the actual same consoles that the Rutherford County 911. Chief Durr and I both sit on the board of that agency, the Rutherford County 911, and there is a backup center, 911 center, for any of the agencies that are operating a 911 center. To have to leave their facility for some reason, or there's computer issues or other issues at their center, they can go into that center, that backup center at Fortress and Blaze Drive, and go into that center and operate. Those consoles, the MCC 7500s, are the same consoles that we will be installing at the Police Department, so there will be no issues with integration from one console to another for our dispatchers. Additionally, what we have spec, because of already being heavily invested in Motorola, is future, the new CAD system integrates very well with Motorola, as well as looking at our basically station alerting systems that we're using for the Fire Department will integrate very well with the Motorola product. We don't know how well it would integrate with some other, other products.
The additional thing I'd like to add is the reason why we're asking now is because of lead time with our new building. Once we place the order, it takes at least four, four months for those consoles to come in. And the other thing is with our current radio systems, with the new portables, there'll be tri-band. systems, with the new portables, there'll be tri-band, which makes us interoperable throughout the state. We can switch to different frequencies. And our current radios that are Motorola, we're going to pass those down through the, through the city, and they'll be on the same seven hundred megahertz system that we're currently on. So those radios aren't just being tossed aside, but they're being passed out throughout, like, for instance, like tonight with roads and bridges, we could pass them, they'd have the same radio and be able to work on a talk group with us for any type of emergency situation.
Mayor and council, we'll maybe pause there and see what questions you might have. But a few years ago, city council moved up and accelerated the purchase of the handheld radios for police and fire, and this is another part of our communications infrastructure that is absolutely critical to our, the safety of our police officers and our firefighters. So we know it is quite a big expense, but this will significantly improve our ability to communicate, not only internally with the city, but with other emergency agencies. And we'll see if you have any questions at this point.
We had received an email from a resident about why we chose Motorola, and I think you answered, answered that, but it, would it be extremely hard to integrate another?
That's a, I'll let Bill Terry.
And I will say one thing about the Motorola system. The state is using Motorola all over the place, and when we were deployed to Gatlinburg, that state system was essentially the only communications that was working. Their cell towers were down because of the fire. Other towers that were operating locally within severe county were down because of the fire, and the state system through Motorola, which is all Motorola backbone and everything else like that, was the only thing operating.
Okay.
Well, they, they asked me to put a few bullet points together, and I tried to keep it down to about a hundred pages, so I'll go quick. For the, for the council members that weren't here in twenty twelve, if you remember, that's, as Mr. Lyons said, that's when we started the process. We had a unfunded federal mandate to narrowband our radios, and that's when we expedited and went ahead and bought the Motorola portable radios at that time, knowing that we would be moving in this direction for the future. At that point, we were operating on a single site system. With the additional growth that was anticipated with Murfreesboro, that's why we made the presentation in twenty twelve to build additional towers, and we now have four towers erected and ready for equipment that's, that's in there, ready to go. One of the reasons that we bought Motorola in twenty twelve was to, so we'd have communications with MTSU. They're on the eight-hundred system, on the state system, that gave us the ability to talk to them as well. As Chief Fokes and Chief Dur said, with the addition of the police headquarters, that expedited us to move to phase two of the radio project. What we're bringing before you tonight is really in preparation of the new communication center. We have to, we have to get the equipment ordered so that the lead time is fulfilled, so when the construction manager gives us the go-ahead to start doing the installations, that the equipment here is ready to go, so we don't delay that project. The proposal has five items in it. The radio consoles for communications, a bidirectional amplifier for the police headquarters that will give us full coverage inside the building, that will cover our UHF, VHF, seven hundred, all cell phone capabilities. It'll have a Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, and T-Mobile amplifier in it. So any outside agency that comes into police headquarters will be able to communicate either with their radio or cellphone. We look at, the state of Tennessee produced a competitive bid for both radios and equipment. As part of that competitive bid, they awarded several manufacturers contracts for part of that bid, Motorola being one. Harris State, Kenwood also received partial, partial awards during that bid process. When I talked to Public Safety and for the state of Tennessee, they are using solely Motorola at this time off of that contract. As, as Chief Dur and Chief Fokes said, we've made a significant investment with Motorola over the last four years. As we looked at the state purchasing, and we also consulted with some other agencies surrounding us that we interact with on a regular basis, we found Tennessee State System is all Motorola, Metro Nashville, Nashville Airport, Williamson County, City of Franklin, Town of Smyrna, City of Laverne, MTSU, Rutherford County Sheriff's Office, Rutherford County Emergency Services, all have the same MCC seventy-five hundred consoles in their communication, as well as the ECD for the backup sites. Bottom line is, we want to be prepared for the installation of the console equipment when the construction manager gives us a go-ahead. With a four-month lead time on the equipment, we just, it's, it's going to be tight now because they're going to be ready for this installation at that point. Our intent is to move for, go ahead and move forward with all the tower equipment at the same time while the building's being constructed, the consoles are being built. We'll go ahead and be installing the RF equipment in the towers at that point. Already applied for and received all of our seven hundred licensing, so we don't have to wait for that. That's ready to go. The purchase of the tri-band radios, as Chief Fokes said, that gives us the ability, not only statewide but region-wide, to be able to communicate with any agency that we might go to to provide mutual aid. If fire went to South Carolina to respond to the flood, they would have been able to program these tri-band radios onsite to be able to communicate with the other agencies down there. Part of the costing in the proposal includes refurbishing our existing radios, installing all-new batteries in them, and includes mobile chargers for all of the city fleet. So we'll be, we'll pass down refurbished radios to the rest of the city departments, which will give them the ability to talk citywide, not only just public safety, but every other department will have that capability. Seven hundred with the digital, we'll be able to create individual talk groups, so each department can talk to itself, but we can also have emergency talk groups as well. So if we've got an ice storm, we can bring streets into the, into the mix and still everybody be able to communicate together. We definitely want to be P-25 compliant. I think that was mentioned as well in the, in the email. All of these systems are P-25 compliant. However, we, we really wish to be more than P-25 compliant. To be, for, for Proposition Twenty-five, it was basically every radio can talk on every system, and all of them will do that. However, we would like to be sure that we have the capability for the GPS function, encryption, man-down feature for the fire department, Bluetooth. Chief Fokes was telling me today that there's new, their mask for when they go into a fire scene has Bluetooth capability now, so they'll be able to communicate better without having to try to hold a microphone up. All of that, all of that is manufacturer-specific. You get, you get some commonality amongst them. However, there are features that are manufacturer-specific. We have such an investment with our current system that we just want to continue down that road and not, and not, and be able to reutilize that and not have to expend that money again. Again, once the seven hundred system's fully functional, we expect it to be able to go live in twenty eighteen. That'll come in after we move into the new police headquarters and dispatch is fully functional. We'll migrate everybody to seven hundred at that time. And the system is built to accommodate the twenty-year urban growth boundary. All of our coverage maps reference that, so we got a lot of, a lot of growth room without having to come back and add anything else. Again, part of the proposal, the only other option on here for coverage is the tower site on the east side, and we would like to see that, that, that gives us full coverage for the whole county. And with that, if, if there's any other questions, I'll be glad to address.
Eleven and a half million includes the construction of the tower.
No, sir. The eleven point five is for all of the equipment for the four existing sites.
Right.
All of the radio consoles, the bidirectional amplifier, all the portables and mobiles.
Okay.
Within the proposal, there's a two-million-dollar item. That's the tower. The tower will, it will have approximately one million dollars in equipment. We know based on the four sites that we built, we're looking at roughly six to seven hundred thousand for the tower itself for construction. We left, we, we had a little bit of wiggle room there because we know we may have some road improvement we need to do on that property, so we wanted to make sure we had it fully covered. So the tot, the total request is thirteen five.
Thirteen million five hundred.
Thirteen five.
So Rob, are we going from ten million that we, that we set aside for our CIP to actually to thirteen million five hundred thousand? I mean, that's really what, I mean-
We're, we're, no, we're actually going from eleven million to thirteen five, because we had, we had a million in for the tower site already.
That was in addition to the ten I see here in CIP?
It was ten and one.
It was ten and one.
Okay, didn't explain that in the second part. I just, I said an additional one million, so it's a-
And if I could, the, the original ten million, when we were looking at that number in twenty twelve, that was for three tower sites, ten consoles, and, and we had not even addressed the new, a new police headquarters at that time, so the bidirectional amplifier was not part of that. The new police headquarters will, will make, contain twenty-six consoles. We'll have eight, eighteen consoles in the comm center. There'll be eight consoles in the, in the emergency operations center, so that if we have an activation, we can actually have dispatchers that are tasked solely to, to handle emergency operations.
One of the questions that I have is, you know, basically, part of this, part of what we're being asked to do is to waive the competitive bid process. I understand we can do that because these things are under a state contract, but, you know, I haven't heard kind of, what do we expect, you know, what would we expect to pay for the same unit by doing a competitive bid relative to buying it under the state contract? I mean, I heard him say they discounted it from where the state contract was, but does it make sense for us to go out and do a competitive bid for Motorola product that'll still fit the, fit the bill here, or?
We would find very, there would very, be very little savings, if any, if we put it out for bid. Metro Nashville did do a competitive bid versus the state contract, and it, it did come back, there was about a, a less than one percent savings. However, when they looked at the bid, the savings, the additional savings came because they asked for additional training and some spare, spare parts. So there was a bigger profit margin in that training side of it, so they were able to give a little bigger discount. The actual equipment cost, they did not get a, a better discount.
I think, you know, part of, you know, when we, we look at a state contract like that, when they're bidding out for agencies to buy off of that, the people who are bidding on it see higher quantities. And so we, we do believe in this case, this is going to represent the best cost to the city, certainly much faster.
So I think my last question would be, if we thought that three towers and that number of units was going to be okay four years ago, you know, we knew what the city was going to look like, basically, why are we twenty percent higher now and five towers?
I think while we were taking a look at it, that fifth tower really rounds out the, the coverage issues that we felt like this is going to give, you know, public safety the kind of coverage they need for the radio. We thought there might be another, you know, tower coming later, but we figured while we were making the upgrades, we would do it all at once.
But based on the coverage study that Motorola did for us in twenty twelve, there, there was a area along South Rutherford Boulevard around MTSU that did have a coverage issue. Not a great one, but enough to give us a little bit of pause, which was why we were looking to do a tower on that east side to, to fill that gap.
I apologize because we, you know, we, because of the shortened week, we hadn't really had any time. I'm literally seeing this in the last twenty-four hours, so it's not, you know, this is a, to come up with an extra two and a half million dollars and no explanation as far as where is that going to come from, other than we're just going to borrow more, is, is sort of tough to just sit here and make a decision on spending an extra two and a half million dollars without competitive bid process and with, without any more explanation than what we're hearing tonight. So, you know, I don't want to not support it, but I also want to make sure I've done all my due diligence for spending an extra two, two and a half million bucks. You know, I guess I wish we had a little more time to kind of learn and, and, and understand what impact this has on our budget, because we really haven't talked about where's that money going to come from. Does it, does that mean, is it-
It would be in the, the next bond issue.
Just borrow more?
The additional, yes.
It's my understanding with the state competitive bidding that they did all the groundwork on looking at other bids before they see many of their bids. So therefore, I think it's my understanding when we go to the state bidding, that is the best route to go, because it's been all researched and-
Yeah, I can see.
-bid it with different companies, so, and it's a very safe, just doing a little research I've done, I feel very comfortable with going with that state bid.
It, it was bid. It was competitive.
Right, and that's how I was-
Just done by the state now.
Exactly.
I'm fairly comfortable with that. It's really-
Kind of saved us a step there.
The additional money that I'm, it's the, it's coming up with an additional two and a half million bucks above and beyond what we've all already agreed to, that I'm-
And when I look at that, too, and that is a large amount, definitely, but when I look at it, I, I look at the growth of our city and what we're predicting even next year and year after next, I think we are, by doing this, we are ahead of the game, and it'd be more expensive if we wait, but to accommodate the growth and how we're growing, I can see, you know, spending it, but-
Help it, you know, Mr. Lance, I know, and, and share your concern about being careful about, you know, the amount of money that, that we borrowed. And when we put together the CIP, it's a five-year projection. We borrow what is approved in year one, and then years two to five are planned projects, and we'll see where we have to go. The importance of communications for police and fire is absolutely paramount. The council shares that same feeling, and so does staff. So while there may be some additional money in year two, which very quickly is getting ready to be year one, we're going to need to go borrow money, this is the kind of project that would bump some lesser projects out because of the importance of it. So if it came down to it, and we were looking at this in year one, and I was faced with a decision to make a recommendation to you, I would absolutely put a priority on a project like this rather than some others, because these are, you know, absolute must-haves, and it may have cut out some other projects that might be nice to have, and we might bump out to year two or three, or try to find another way. So I, I share your, your concern about where's the money going to come from, but, you know, had we had these numbers a year ago, this is what we would have, have shown, and we would have ensured that, you know, we gave our police officers, firefighters what they needed for communications.
And if I, if I can, in twenty twelve, if, this was all public safety. This didn't include all the other city departments at that time. So the, the extra money also covers every other city department within Murfreesboro. So if you think about what the cost of those radios would be, that's where, that's where the extra money would come in.
And that will be hugely important.
How come?
Well, for instance, you know, he mentioned the street department, you know-
Using the old, old equipment, so that's what you're saying, using the Motorola equipment that-
Yes, sir.
Pass it to other departments.
Yes, sir.
We don't have the ability for the street department and police to communicate like they might in the middle of the night with an emergency like this. Now we would have that capability.
All right.
Yeah, I guess I'm reminiscing back on last time we did radio upgrades, how much the officers and firefighters commented on the improvement in their ability to communicate, especially in situations where they're in burning buildings and, and situations where the, the volume is, is so important, and, and safety features that are technology improvements this time goes by with the alarms that go off when the firefighters fall and things like that. And, and, and although I'm a hundred percent in agreement with Rick on the concern about the budget part, I, I often joke about the longer we talk about it, the more construction expense is going to be. And so, so I do think that there's probably an importance to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing at the right time, and, and there, there are times where we buy land and look and say, it seems like a lot of money now, and then we'll look back five years later and we'll go, gosh, we bought that land for twenty-five thousand dollars an acre, and it's forty thousand dollars an acre across the street from it today. So, so there are continuing increases in costs, so what we spend today may be saving us huge amounts down the road. So having said all that, I'll, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Are you approving, there's three items under two.
So we're, we're, we'll need to consider to approve purchase of tower and tower site equipment, UHF, VHF, seven hundred megahertz tower site infrastructure and microwave equipment.
Can I combine all items A, B, and C?
I think we'd have to do C separately, because-
Okay, item A. I move for approval on item A. Second.
Ten eight.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now I've, um, entertained the approval of purchase of tower and tower site equipment for UHF, VHF, seven hundred megahertz tower site infrastructure and microwave equipment.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will need to adopt resolution seventeen R zero-three expressing official, official intent that certain expenditures to be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for purchase of seven hundred megahertz tower site infrastructure, dispatch consoles and two-way radios and accessories and tower and tower site equipment, UHF, VHF, seven hundred megahertz tower site infrastructure and microwave equipment be reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And this is the refunding resolution.
And in the interest of safety, I move for approval on item C as well.
Second.
Motion, second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor, you want to certainly compliment, uh, Mr. Bill Terry, uh, for all of his hard work. He was, uh, this clearly was a team effort. Lieutenant Sanders Watson retired, uh, last week. Lieutenant Watson did a great deal of work on this project. You see Sergeant Sam Campbell on the back wall, uh, you know, a lot of teamwork. You saw the two chiefs, uh, standing up here, but, uh, they were ably assisted by, uh, lots of our team, including, uh, Jim and Paul Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell.
Okay, we'll need to consider for adoption, resolution sixteen R twenty-three expressing official intent that certain expenditures be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures to acquire approximately a hundred and sixty acres of property at seventy-three fifty-two and seventy-ninety-six Franklin Road to be reimbursed from proceeds, notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro.
Mayor, you, um, at your last council meeting in December, approved a land sale contract to purchase the Richards and Tenpenny Properties on, uh, Highway, well, Franklin Road. Uh, the total for that purchase was four million dollars. Uh, you did defer the refunding resolution for that. Uh, wanted to get some additional, uh, information about how that project might be funded. Uh, Mr. Crumley may, uh, wanna help out, but it, quickly summarize, it's a four million dollar acquisition cost. Uh, and looking at the existing bond issue, uh, for, uh, money already borrowed by the city, uh, we believe we can, uh, there's one point eight money and a, one point eight million dollars in existing bond proceeds that can be used for this project. Uh, and sitting down with, um, Ms. Wright, we believe there'd be one million dollars from, uh, fund balance, uh, that could be used. And, uh, while the refunding resolution, uh, says three million dollars, uh, we believe we can, uh, use, uh, about one point two million dollars in future bond proceeds. And that would be, uh, our recommendation. Tried to bring down the, uh, amount of new money, uh, uh, as much as we could. And, uh, we were able to get that to, uh, we believe one point two million dollars in new money.
Where is that referenced in the resolution? I'm not sure.
The resolution says, um, three million dollars, uh, but it would be our intent, uh, to use the, um, approximate one point eight million dollars in money already borrowed, as well as one million dollars from reserves. We're getting ready to, uh, have our finance retreat, uh, with council on Wednesday. And we had an, um, outstanding year last year financially.
I only figure that I see in the resolution is four million, not to exceed four million dollars. I'm not sure where the three.
Okay, let's see, let me get. Okay, four, okay. I'm sorry, it was, four million dollars is in the re, uh, reimbursement resolution, but we would, uh, prefer to use less.
Well, so does that mean we're amending it, or do we leave it at four million? I'm not sure exactly what we're.
So you can, you can think of this as permissive. This doesn't require you to borrow any money. But if you don't pass this reimbursement resolution, it may prohibit us from being able to borrow money to pay for West Park in the future. There is a ninety-day lookback provision in the IRS code that if we spend the money today, we'll have ninety days where we could reimburse ourselves without that resolution. Uh, right now, I, I don't think we'll be ready to go to the bond market in ninety days. And so this keeps that flexibility that if you want to borrow money to pay for this park, you can do so. Without this reimbursement resolution, that door may shut on us in about ninety days.
Do we have an? Sorry, Bill, go ahead. Sorry, we were gonna. Do we have, uh, last we left this property, there was a thirty-day window we were gonna look at and make sure that some things were in line. Are we, have we gotten an update on that?
Yeah, well, we, we've been, um, doing the, um, phase one, environmental. Uh, I don't believe that's back yet, but, um, right now, what we've heard so far, there's, there's no indication of a problem. The concern that.
On any of the property? So all hundred?
I don't have, I don't, I, we don't have the report yet, but, uh, you know, based on the, the work that's been done so far, nobody has raised a, raised a flag.
Although if the, if an issue is identified, phase two, we do have an extension period to complete a phase two if we needed to.
If we don't approve this, we just pay cash for it if we decide to buy it, right?
We've, we've got ninety days, or else we will be paying cash.
But, but we don't even have ninety days if we don't approve this, or we can approve this for ninety days?
Ninety days without approving the reimbursement resolution. There's a ninety-day lookback in the IRS provisions.
And you can approve the reimbursement resolution and you don't have to use it, or you don't have to use it all. So this is, this is just to keep us covered.
Really just maintains our flexibility.
So it could, could wind up being fifty percent borrowed and fifty percent paid, is?
Correct.
You all set that amount when we adopt the CIP.
Correct.
Are we gonna leave it at four million?
I was gonna say, is there any other need to leave it? What's the need to leave it at four million?
You can, will reduce it. I would suggest two and a half million is a, a good number. If, if you wind up using bond proceeds to pay for everything, two and a half million keeps us covered.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'm going to move for approval with it amended to two and a half million, uh, maximum.
Second. Discussion. Motion, second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Letter from the city attorney, uh, we have a letter from the city attorney regarding the council vacancy. Mr. Tindall?
Uh, Mayor, uh, council members, I provided, uh, earlier today and then also provided tonight a revised memorandum concerning council vacancies. Uh, to fill a vacancy right now, the charter allows council to appoint, um, an individual to, to serve in the vacant seat. Um, that, uh, appointment would serve until the primary election now set, uh, currently set for May second, two thousand and eighteen, uh, in which time there'd be an election for the newly elected person to serve August the second, two thousand and eighteen. And that elected person would then serve a, a normal term, a normal, normal four-year term. Um, that's currently the way the charter and, uh, the state statutes are written.
Mr. Tindall, I'll, I'll start this off. I, I had a discussion in our prior meeting today with, um, some of our state legislators and basically asked them, as I understand it right now, our charter does not allow us to call for a special election. So what we would have to do if we decided collectively that we thought that an election would be the best way to handle that would be that we would have to amend our charter. And so the question then becomes, that takes state approval through the legislators. They told me they could get it done very quickly. You know, um, I think, I, I think by the end of February, they said very easily. So I don't know if that's, you know, that, things can change like that. But, um, the Rutherford County Election Commission said that they would need somewhere between eighty and ninety days. So if we chose to go that route, I've, you know, we, we may be able to have an election by what that would be end of February, wait ninety more days, March, April, May, end of May. We could have an election somewhere around the end of May, potentially, um, to, to take care of this and have somebody in place within six months through an election where the people get to vote. And, and they don't have to wait, they don't have to rerun.
They would serve the remaining term.
Yeah, so if they're.
And they would run again.
If they're appointed, they have to run again in May of two thousand and eighteen.
Now, it, uh, that, it would be August of two thousand and eighteen.
No, if they're appointed, they have to run in May of two thousand and eighteen and then run again in August of two thousand and eighteen.
Well, but the, the statute is an old sta, we need to chant, clean this up anyway, because this is when we used to have a city election in April. That's what it refers to.
And that would be true, except that there, the state, um, uh, statute requires that the vacancy be filled and then filled into the next regular election, either a primary or a general. Um, so this isn't keying off of the, of the charter, it's keying off the state statute.
I see. Well, does the state statute tie to, does a special election have to tie to a, uh, county election? Or can it?
No, it'd be a reg, that would be a regular election, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to do.
So a special election can occur at any time?
Special election can occur after its call, it would call, actually, it needs to occur within seventy-five to eighty days of the call, or it needs to be set. Within seventy-five to eighty days of the call, and then it could occur at any time, that, that's true. And then the person who is elected there would serve the remaining term and the seat would be up for election August the second, two thousand and eighteen, and then back into the regular four-year cycle.
Just, just a question, as I was reading this, where, where did the two hundred and seventy days come from? Why, why is that?
I don't know.
I mean, it's odd. You know, two hundred and seventy-one or two hundred and sixty-nine? I just, I thought, wondered why they pulled it.
It was amended in fourteen, I, I don't know.
Okay.
How much are we talking about as a special election taxpayers' dollars?
Sixty thousand.
Talking, yeah. With Mr. Farley, it would be approximately sixty-one thousand dollars.
That would be the, if I remember in his memo, that's, the minimum is sixty-one thousand, I think, is what the, the number was. So it would be a minimum of sixty-one thousand.
That sounds good and everything, but this is just my opinion. To hold a special election and spend a minimum of that amount, I would like to see the council, by whatever process we appoint, rather than go and use that money, taxpayers' dollars for a special election. That's my take on it personally.
Well, let me, let me make my thoughts known. I think whatever we do, I, I would like us to establish a procedure that we can lean upon whenever this occurs. This, this occurred, it seems like we, we need to clean this process up so that we don't have to revisit it every time something like this occurs. Hopefully it won't happen again for a while. But when it does, it shouldn't be that we just be able to, you know, at that point in time, make a decision. I'd like us to see something that, that makes sense, which is reasonable and fair. And, uh, I don't think you're ever gonna see me not, uh, encourage folks, uh, the participation to a vote. I, I just, uh, think the public's opinion, as opposed to four people, I guess it would be four. What would be the vote now with the six of us? Still four people, um, establishing that, uh, filling that vacancy. I, I would like us to pursue, uh, an election because, one, I think it's reasonable and it provides for a lot of people who, you know, the election process does something. It, it prepares someone for public service because they have to be able to logically put their thoughts about public service, uh, out there before the public. And it also helps the community deal with circumstances and situations. Maybe we are getting raised to the surface in the course of an election. And the public make the decision. The people who are represented, uh, get to make that decision. And, uh, I, I just think it's fair and reasonable to have an election. And sixty thousand dollars, yes, there's certainly lots of ways we could spend sixty thousand dollars. But tonight, we just got through voting on something that was thirteen million dollars. Relatively small, uh, dollars to be spent to get the will of the people occupying a, a chair as opposed to four people from council.
I understand that, but I still feel spending a minimum of that amount of money. And then, and it's not that I don't believe in the election process, because Lord knows I've run twice and I know what it's like. But on the other hand, when you look at it, if I'm not mistaken, seven percent of the people vote, I mean, to spend that amount of money and we have that amount of people coming out and actually participate in the election process, would that be a waste of money? And this is something going to a different subject. But as elected officials, we are gonna have to do something, and I don't know what, in the future, to see why the people are not coming out and voting. I don't know if it's, they don't trust politicians or, I don't feel like it's important, but that's another subject. But seven percent, and I may be wrong on that percentage, but I know it was under ten percent, I think. People actually get out and vote, that's sad. And for us to spend that kind of taxpayers' money, I'm not for doing that, but you know, that's, again, that's just my opinion.
Well, a couple of years ago, I tried to move the election date from April to August. And my whole reason, and the reason that seven out of eight people in Rutherford County voted, I think, to move the election date was to save money. And, uh, you know, heaven forbid, but at, the day after we have this election that we're talking about, if a truck runs over Rick, then, and I've got an empty seat sitting next to me here, that'd be nice for a ch-
That was, that wasn't a truck, that was the bus that just ran over Rick.
But we, but, but, uh, can decide, we would be right back in this scenario because we would have another vacant seat and we're sitting here going, well, we've got till the next election period for that seat to set empty. And, and, and I think that there is an importance to be tied to the election and the people's vote. And, and in, in this particular race that, uh, has created the vacancy, which was Madeline and Rick and, uh, Doug. I think personally that the next highest vote getter, which would have been the number four finisher, should be the person who would be the prime candidate for us to look at. And whoever that might be, if he's interested or she's interested, then I think that way you would say there was value to those people who went and voted for that person. Even though they didn't win the election, the people chose who we appointed. And I think that process would be one that I would find saves us sixty-four thousand dollars and it also prevents us from being in the situation. I think the charter was written the way it's written for a reason. And I think it's because they expect us to, as, as community leaders, to be able to fill that spot. And then the next election process, if the public feels that person isn't who they would have selected, they have the process to go out and elect whoever they would think would be the best person in that seat. So, so I think there's, there's still the opportunity to say, there's a reason to campaign, there's a reason to get in the election process, there's a reason to get involved. But at the end of the day, I think spending sixty-four thousand dollars is, is, for a situation that would fix this situation. But in the case where Rick got ran over, it doesn't fix the situation because we're right back in the same boat the day after the election.
Let me mention something about getting run over. Even more so, to Bill's point and to Eddie's point, if me and Eddie both get run over.
I ain't gonna be out with you.
Of course, not talking, but we're in the same vicinity and we both get run over. Or if we're in a power board meeting last night with me and Shane and Eddie all in attendance and a tornado comes through there, then all of a sudden you have two or three members that are appointing the entire rest of the council. All right, so if we're getting on that, you know, the, the idea of having an election versus appointment and we wanna fix this for years to come. and we wanna fix this for years to come, you know, we've got, we've got a situation right now where we have, if we do it this time, we have to change the charter, which is gonna delay this process by, we think, somewhere around sixty days. Okay? But that sets the, that sets the situ-, the process in place for the future, that where in the future years, someone can be in place within ninety days via an election, if so cho-, you know, if they choose to do it that way. This particular situation also, if we do it by election, y- you know, it removes the situation of someone having to get, if we appoint someone now, they have to run in May of two thousand eighteen. Okay? They serve for three months, they have to run again in August of two thousand eighteen. So for this particular situation right here, I mean, you, if we do this by appointment, we're setting the stage for somebody to potentially come in, run a campaign, the electorate is gonna be different in May, the, a May primary election versus.
Back in the August.
Versus an August election, so you're gonna have all these people run in May potentially. If somebody wins narrowly, they may serve for, you know, whatever, forty-five to sixty days. You know, well, y- you know, they may all run in May, because they're trying to get a leg up, then they run all again in April. It's, that's not probably how we wanna set this thing up for now or for the future. So, I mean, here, here's what I think we gotta boil this thing down to, for us to be able to get to a point of making a decision here, you know, I stand for an election, Bill, you said you stand for an election, Madeline wants to appoint, I'm not sure what you said. Do you wanna, was that an appoint or was that an election? I'm just trying to run you over.
Got that part.
I'm for a point. You're for a point.
See, the three options that we have would be, we need to, to make sure legally that we can have, i- if there's an opportunity to have an election, that we can do that. And that, that would be, I guess, if the legislature said that they, they would amend or change the charter, would that solve the legal issue on having an election?
That would allow the city to have an election.
Special election.
I mean, there, I don't, there's not really a legal issue, because right now, there's no authority to hold it, so we grant the authority.
Correct. So the three options are gonna be, to ask the legislature to let us have an election, to appoint someone, or option three is to leave the seat vacant. So those are our three, our three options that we, that we have.
You got one, two, three for appointing. But also, let's go back to appointing, how far are we gonna go back election-wise? Because Eddie went back, what, he go back three years?
I'm going back to Doug's election, which, and Madeline's election.
Twenty-fourteen.
April of fourteen.
Do you go back to?
And, and.
Hold on, hold on.
Go ahead.
Do you go, do you go back to Bill Shackleton, Bill Jones' election? That's.
That's, the catch twenty-two right there, so how far do you go back?
Well, I, right, well, neither's.
And, and I think that anyone who has run a campaign, and I don't know if there's a magic number that we pick in the last six years, or anybody who has run a campaign would be eligible to submit their name. The only problem that I foresee is if we just open it up to the public and say, I, I've talked to a dozen people in the last week, that have said, I would like to be a city councilman. And, and my first question to them is, well, have you ever run a campaign to be a city councilman? And the answer's no. And I said, well, would you be willing to run a campaign if we don't pick and there's an election? And the answer was, no, but I'd like to be a po-, a city council member. And, and, and my response is, well, you're not willing to work for it. And, and, and that's the reason I think there's an importance on going through a campaign, because certainly every one of us up here understand the rigors of a campaign, and the process, and the expense, and, and all the things that go along with having made the sacrifice to put your name out there and go through the compliments and not-so-nice things that'll be said about you in the process. And it, uh, I, I think that there's something that's special about those people who are willing to have gone out there and put their name on the ballot, and said, I would like to be in that position. And if, if we wanna base it off the number of votes they got, then I would say we need to look at just the runner-ups, the people who finished second. Um, the person who was the, in your race, it would have been s- second, but in most cases, it would be the person who finished fourth, because generally, it's the top three vote-getters. So, you know, if, if we just went back three elections and said, okay, who was the high vote-getter in the last three elections that didn't get elected, then we would be putting an emphasis on the people who went to the polls and voted for those people, it makes their vote count, just like it counted for the person who finished third in the regular election, and said, I finished third, but I still won. And, and so, so I do think there's an importance of having votes cast and, and the person having made at least enough commitment to say, in the past, I have tried to be a city council member, I have offered myself in the past, and I've gone through the process. And, and, so, and if we wanted to do an interview process of the top three runners-up in the last three elections, and of course, the last election didn't have a runner-up, because it was unopposed. So really, if we asked the two candidates who were the runners-up in the last two elections, uh, Bill's election and Madeline and Rick and Doug's election, if we asked those to be the candidates, let's interview them and then take a vote on who, which one we picked to let serve. I mean, to me, that way we get somebody who was somewhat picked by the public, we don't spend sixty-four thousand dollars, and if something happens that we have to do the process again, then we can go back and, and say, who, who else qualifies? And, and, and take the next person in line who ran a campaign. But, uh, I, uh, I, I think that, you know, we're elected to be leaders, and we're elected to, to, to make choices, and, and this certainly isn't the precedent that we're setting by picking a person, uh, Ron Washington, who just left the council and then did a phenomenal job during his years of service, was appointed to the council when Richard Reeves became the mayor and left a vacant seat. When John Pittard left, there was an appointment made.
No.
There wasn't? Okay. But, oh.
Yeah, it's a vacant.
True. They left it vacant, possibly it was close enough. But, so, so, I mean, a- and I would even go with vacant, um, you know, at, but, but, but I still think that it'll make our lives easier if we can get back to an odd number where we can have, avoid tie votes, because I, I think it makes it really complicated when the process has the ability to continuously have a tie week in, week out.
Okay, so do you, do you want to appoint only if it's a point in that manner? Because there, there's a, oh, there's a difference.
Yeah.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but we.
You want to appoint, but it may not be the last.
Right.
But when you're talking about, um, I see what you're saying, but I don't think we should limit that to, first of all, we need to define someone who's had the experience of being in a campaign. So if we're looking at that, I don't think we should close the door on a spouse of someone that is running a campaign. Because I can tell you, if one is running, trust me, the other one is running too. So I don't think we should just limit to that person, but also look at the spouse of the person running, let them enter the hat, in the mix too.
All right, Craig, what's the, is there a protocol or anything, how far you go back for the next election to appoint somebody?
There, there's no process defined, uh, on how to.
Point whoever we want.
Okay, but it doesn't make sense, and I'm just saying this, this is just my opinion. You wouldn't go back two elections, pick one from one election, then one from the next one, just doesn't make sense. Why wouldn't you go and get the, the very last election to get that person? I'm speaking to the council now.
I mean, it could be anybody, I mean, it could, it doesn't have to be an election, it doesn't have to have anything to do with an election. So it, I don't think there would be any of that in play for, I mean, if we, if we decide to appoint, it's just gonna be whoever everybody wants to appoint, if we can get four people to say the same person. It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to have anything to do with an election.
Okay.
Last one, or three, three elections ago, or six.
And, and this is why I think, uh, I think you made a great point, Eddie, about the importance of an election, and that's why we need to have an election. It's because it makes, uh, it makes sense to, uh, allow that person to vet them through that election process, and let the, let the discerning voice be the voice of the people, and not just the four people up here. It, a little frustrated that.
Name.
Oh, I, you were gonna, if we get off into the weeds and try to determine some arbitrary evaluation, well, is it four years ago? Is it two years ago? Is it gonna be an election that was held? That election with Rick and Madeline was in August. That was in Au-, I mean, excuse me, in April. It was an April election before we moved it to August. Our election, my election, was in November. And, you know, if I remember correctly, there was like thirty-nine percent of the vote, and it wasn't because of me or anybody in that election, it was because it was a national election that occurred at that time. We had a huge amount, percentage, it wasn't seven, it was one of the larger percentages of people participating, because there were other elections going on, the state general election and the national election was on that time. So, you know, I, I think the only fair thing is not to get too, I mean, do, too constrained by the expenditure, or the fact that somebody's gonna be in an accident, it could happen tomorrow. But to, to me, the discerning thing is, is it fair to everybody out there that might offer themselves to public service? And it, is it fair and reasonable? And if we grant the opportunity for us to have a special election, it, to me, that's, that's the, uh, the way I would determine what is the right thing to do. It's fair to everybody, all those people that have called, or emailed, or said that they would like to serve. Then go through that process, offer yourself for the election, and try to do it as soon as we can to fill that vacancy, uh, a- with the states, uh, the correcting of our, but because we need to correct our statute anyway. Ask them to correct it, make it efficient, and hold the election. Then I think the filling of a vacancy is fair, is sustainable over a long period of time, regardless of what circumstances happen. We could write this into our charter and let it always be the guiding, and you don't have to sit back and say, well, are we gonna go back and determine an election that may have been three people running, or no people running? You know, I mean, I, it's only fair to me if we have the election. I don't, I could nev-, I just don't think I can, I don't think I can ever vote to a point, I just don't think I can.
I wanna, I'll say this just real quickly, as far as the election goes, is, um, you know, in, in our charter, in the state rules as it sits right now, if, if there's an election within two hundred and seventy days, I don't know, we all say, we don't know where the two hundred and seventy days comes from, but if there's an election within two hundred and seventy days, it's gonna be an election. And what I laid out for you at the beginning was, we can have an election within two hundred and seventy days. We can have an election within a hundred and eighty days. It's just a special election instead of an election that's already been scheduled. So if our standard is already set for us to have an election, um, my, my question would be, why wouldn't we, unless we're just trying to have our, you know, our hand-pick? Um, and so, I just think the election is the better way to go. I mean, I don't know, w- you know, the, the idea of, do we do an election, or do we do a vacancy, or do we appoint, like Shane laid out, you know, the thing about the appointment is, we've already heard out of two or three people who, uh, who are talking about wanting to appoint, two or three different types of people that we're gonna be looking for to appoint. And so, if we can't get four people together right now on this, what, you know, the likelihood of getting four people together on the actual appointment, seems like it might be not the best process for me too, you know, for us also, so.
I think that's a really good point.
Well, so, an election solves all of that. It also solves the May and Au- August situation in two thousand eighteen, which I think is, you know, not our fault, but something that we do not wanna promote occurring. So, anyway.
So what are we talking about, time-wise, if we say election, again?
We think.
One said, what do you say about?
June first-ish.
I mean, you said the legislators are gonna do what now?
They, they gotta, they gotta put, put it, push it through.
Well, the House is gonna have to approve it, and, and, of course, there's no financial state, so the Senate's gonna pa- approve it.
And they're already got state law in place.
Why don't we ask, I'm, I don't know, I, I guess the best thing to do is just make a, a motion, but I, I would, it, we could request our city attorney to draft a statute, or a charter.
Resolution.
A resolution, and see how that gets put together, present it to us in a week, and then, uh, pass that along, if, if we pursue this, this, this direction of an election, then it relatively could be, I mean, we're not holding our hands, if, uh, it, what, what, Mr. Tindall, does that?
One thing I'll say, let me, let me say this to you, just worst-case scenario, i- if they don't sign it until the last day of their session, that's gonna probably be end of April, the way they've been running. Okay? So then we go all of May, June, all of July, we have the August, you know, like an August first election. I think it's more like June first, based on what they told me a couple hours ago, but worst-case, August first. So I just think, you know, everybody out there saying that is, and to, to get that out on the table, we gotta take a worst-case scenario into account, if that's the way we decide to go, you know, if they sit on their hands and don't finish it up until the end, which, like I said, they've already got state law in place that allows this, so there shouldn't be any of that, there should be no situation with it, but it may be till then, before they approve our change to the charter.
The part that I think, when I got the memo today, the part that does not make sense to me, when we talk about appointment, is theoretically, and, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong on this, if you have someone who decides that they want, we appoint them to the position, then they would technically start campaigning sometime in March or April for a, a election, theoretically. The part that I'm, and I wanna make sure I'm right on this, if they're elected in May, then if they wanna stay on the council, they're technically not gonna get to stop campaigning, because for a two thou-, for an August two thousand eighteen election, we start, you start campaigning in February or March. So this person's gonna start campaigning in January, February, if they win an election and decide that they wanna be part, then they're gonna take the seat and still be campaigning again, to get elected again in August. So the part that, I can speak from, from my point.
But aren't we gonna have to pay for two special elections there, because?
No, those are already primary and general.
They're already primary and general.
Those are already.
County, county has.
Are you in two thousand eighteen or seventeen?
No, I'm in eighteen.
Eighteen had, the county has a primary in.
Okay, yeah, eighteen.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying is, say that we appointed someone, say that we appointed someone next week, they're gonna serve, but then start having to campaign for a, a May election in eighteen. And then, if they get elected, and rightfully so, then they're gonna have to continue campaigning for another election.
That's right.
Forty-five days or sixty days later. So the, the part I think the council needs to think about is, who would wanna do that? I, I mean, and I, I say that in.
Well, and it's not just, it's not just if it's that person that we appoint, the person that we appoint may not even run in May of eighteen, so you may have a whole new slate of people who might run.
Or you could win the first election and not win the second election.
Right, you could be the sh-, you could be the shortest.
You could be there for three months.
You could be the shortest-term council member ever, ever elected. So I, I think that the part where, and, and I don't think we have to make a decision on this tonight, I think it's good to have the discussion, but the thing that we need to really determine is, i- if you do appoint someone and that person does a good job, or we, we, we all come to a consensus, who would you really get that's gonna wanna run in two elections within sixty days of one another? And that, that's a, that's something I would, I would think about that would be.
Leaning towards vacant?
Well, I, I, I would be more interested to hear what the, you know, we just talked to one, um, we didn't really bring this up to the entire delegation, um, so I would be interested not just in what one delegation. So, I would be interested not just in what one delegation ever thinks, I would be more interested in what the entire delegation thinks. And if, you know, one person says, yeah, I don't think that's a problem, but there's, you know, a lot of other people that are gonna have to vote for a charter amendment. So, I mean, I, I think the things that we need to think about is that, so what happens if we say we wanna go the election route, but the legislature says, no, we can't do that, and we're, we're not gonna do that? Well, the, the, the state law provides for municipals to have special elections if it is in their charter. If, you can have a special election if that provision is in your charter. So, really, all we're asking is for our city attorney to draft an amendment, or a correction, or whatever you wanna say it, to section eighteen in our charter that allows us to have a special election. And, and then you can, you know, as an alternative, as an alternative to this appointment, to this, to this appointment process that we presently have in section eighteen. So, then that would grant us the authority from state, from the state law, to be able to conduct a special election. And that, that's really all we're asking. So, I, to me, it's charging our city attorney to come up with that language, and then we can review it and decide whether that's what.
Let me go, let me ask you guys, for the appoint, for the people who are leaning towards appoint right now, would you guys, I, I think this is okay for me to ask, I mean, would you guys be okay from a perspective of, if we don't make the decision tonight as far as what direction we're gonna use this election? But do we, do, do you guys have an inclination to want to have the resolution started in order to give the capability to do special election? Whether that be for this time, or for next?
Yeah.
Or for future, you know, 'cause we can start that. What he told me was he'll get it to the floor next week. Now, they take a couple weeks off, so we're gonna get delayed if we don't get something to them.
I would say, I wish that we weren't even in this, this, having to have this discussion. But I, I do think that, in my opinion, the charter needs to be cleared up. You know, when we're starting to go and decide, well, is it within two-hundred-and-seventy days? Is it within a general election? Is there a preceding election that's coming after it? It just needs to be, in my opinion, very clear and concise that if we have a vacancy on council, this is how it's handled every time. In that way, it's not, well, this is what the council thought back in two thousand, you know, fourteen, this is what the council thought back in two thousand and six. It's really, it's defined, this is what we should do. I mean, that, that's my opinion on the, on the charter.
Yeah, not, not to throw another cog in the wheel, but, you know, what if we have, we opened it up and the most previous election was unopposed? I mean, there were three people that ran for three seats. What if nobody puts their name in the hat? I mean, to run for the office, I mean, then what do we do? Do we appoint? Do we, but, that's just something, food for thought. And, and the charter requires that we maintain a minimum of six and a maximum of ten council members plus the mayor. We're currently not at what the charter requires. Is there a time that we would have to meet that requirement? Where are we at in that process?
No, that, that was an issue that was addressed on the last vacancy, and, and the outcome of that was that the council, while its, its obligation is to try and maintain that, has the ability under other persons of the charter to, to take, take the actions it needs and continue to operate. So, it doesn't present any charter problem to have, per se, to have a seat vacant.
I'll switch over to vacant.
Craig, if this had, or Mr. Tindall, if this had happened with, in two-hundred-and-seventy days, then, then we could have, so, I mean, say that we left the seat vacant till two-hundred-and-seventy days, then there could be a special election, correct?
No. No, there still wouldn't be the authority to hold, hold a special election.
I'm gonna make a motion that we change the charter and ask the city attorney to amend it so that we would be permitted to have a special election.
Second.
Well, that's two things. Don't we need to do the charter first and then talk about the, I mean, vote for the election? Because we're gonna change the charter anyway. Right.
This is just a draft, draft the change.
Draft, change the change.
And, and it would be to, to, let me just ask, it's to change the charter to add the ability of council to hold a special election if it chooses. So, in other words, it would be an alternative and still keep the appointment in the event that council wants to appoint.
I think there could be a scenario that we might have to. I, I mean, if nobody ran, I mean, I think that if nobody signed up, I think we would have the obligation.
Well, he can put that in.
At some point, if, you know, if you were to lose two members, I mean, there's a such thing as the council not being large enough. And, and I mean, there's a hundred and thirty thousand people that we represent, and that number increases incrementally by percentage pretty significantly when, when we're down one. If we're down two, then it, it dramatically increases.
So, can we not have the city attorney to do, to do research on what's best, on how we should move forward?
Well, I think we should vote on it after he, he does an ordinance.
Bring it back to us.
Or an amendment, or, or an amendment to the charter and presents it to us. It may not even need a motion. I, I think it's probably best that we do one just so we, consensus on whether or not we're really doing an election or not.
Can I?
Sure.
Would it make sense to say that, that we ask him to draft an ordinance that would state that the council, the, the primary choice would be, first choice would be to hold a special election in the charter? That would be, the council needs to have the ability to hold a special election. But in some circumstance, that if the council had to appoint, you've got, you've got, okay, look, it's, 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 here's the first option. Second option is, I'm not sure how you legally write that.
Well, the, the difficulty in writing something like that is the measure that you would use to drop to the second option. And that's what.
I don't wanna think about, you know, what could or would happen, but,
Exactly.
You know, but what, there could be circumstances where you had multiple vacancies. So, you know, what would happen if you had multiple, multiple vacancies on a governing body? And you did not have the opportunity that you could wait to have a special election? And, and I know that's probably something that would never happen, but, you know, what would happen if you ended up and you only had two members sitting on the city council? Would you, could you conduct the city's business with only two members on a, on a governing body? If, if something like that, that happened? Or would you, would the city want three members on a governing body? So, there, there needs to be, I think, some kind of option to address those.
Allow for appoint.
And with that, I'm gonna go home and,
Chief folks.
Put my head in my pillow tonight, so. Well, could, could, can we agree that the, the caveat in the existing section that says two-hundred-and-seventy days doesn't make a whole lot of sense? A vacancy that occurs.
Yes. Well, and, and that was gonna be my question, is whether we wanna keep it or not? I mean, there are, there are, I, it seems to me, and I don't know why it was there, but it seems to me that there was a period of time where they recognized that perhaps a vacancy was, was preferable. And so, they, somebody picked a period of time to allow for that vacancy to, to, or the council seat to remain vacant. I'm not too sure of the background of that. There's pluses and minuses to that, which, to, to Councilmember Wade's point, that you asked for research on the best option, having been through this a couple, there is no best option. I'll be quite frank with you.
We'll come up with two, how about that?
Yeah. There, there's lots of alternatives, and they all present pluses and minuses, whatever is decided. So, unfortunately, I'm not sure we could ever get to a, that kind of resolution, but.
I, I'll say this, you know, I think, in, in my opinion, I think if it's possible, the, the best thing to do is to have an election, that, in, in my opinion. That's, I think that's the cleanest way, it, it, you know, I think that, that seems to be, in, in this case at least, 'cause it makes no sense to me to require someone that's gonna run in, two elections in basically a ninety-day period. Now, if that were not the case, then that may be a different situation on, on, on this. But that, I just can't see that, that's, that's a desirable situation for, for anyone, you know, to, to do that. Unless the, the other thing is if there's appointment and someone said, look, I'm not running, you know. So, that would be, you know, an option.
All right, so do we need a motion? Do we need the, the people to say?
Sorry, ready to motion.
There is a motion.
All right, and you seconded it?
I seconded it as far, and, and so what we're doing is, we're gonna,
We're gonna draft a resolution that would go to the legislature to amend the section eighteen of the charter to allow the option for council to call a special election to fill the seat. And we'll clean up the language from the election date and eliminate the two-hundred-and-seventy-day period.
So, I think, yeah, and, so we have a motion and a second, but once that happens, are y'all, we need to have discussions with the, the local delegation to see how.
And again, worst-case scenario, it's August first. Now, again, so I think, right now, this vote that we're getting ready to have only is dealing with the charter.
Okay.
It's not saying that's how we're gonna deal with this particular.
That'd be a resolution to come to you at your next meeting for you to vote.
Right.
So, we have a motion and a second on a resolution recommending to give the council the authority to hold a special election.
I'll bring that back next week.
And I wanna put, make sure you put in that resolution the word option. Put the word option in there. Because if you don't, we are saying we're gonna have an election. So, make sure the word option is in that resolution. That's the only way I'm gonna vote on these guys. The word option. This is even in the future, option. That means choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, or.
It's election or appoint, right?
The, the council can elect to either appoint. It may not be the exact word option, but it will be the same effective option as a.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Wright, if motion and a second, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
So, we've asked for a recommendation to send to city attorney. So, the, the question now is, would the council want to wait until next week to get that resolution back to decide?
Yes. If that's how we'll go forward with.
If that's the, the direction that the council needs to go. Okay. So, we, Mr. Lanz, if you'll make sure and put this on the agenda for,
Yes, sir.
Next week.
You have board and commission appointments, the Murfreesboro Golf Commission reappoint John Blankenship, Don Turner, and Alan Richardson.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Who for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ms. Wright, we have several beer applications, or all of those?
We do. We have a market at twenty-seventy-five Las Casas Pike, Suite A, that's changing owners and their name. That application is complete and ready for approval. We do recommend approval on that one. Then we have three that are in process that like their building codes inspections. One is a restaurant at one-sixteen John Rice Boulevard. It's a new location. One is at four-oh-seven South Manny Avenue. It's an ownership change and a name change. And one is a grocery market at twenty-fourteen East Main Street. It is also a name change for that location. And we do recommend approval of those permits once they complete their building codes inspections.
You have these beer permits in front of you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements that need to be paid?
No, sir.
Other business from staff or city council?
Ms. Lanz, I have one thing. I know that we, as council members, have gotten a lot of feedback so far on payroll and arrears, and that's something that we're gonna talk about. And I know that we have several options that we're looking at. Can you come back to the council with the financial option on what it would cost if, if the city decided? And, and I'm not advocating this, but I think it's something that the council, we, we can make a decision on if we decided that we wanted to incur that expense of the entire.
I'll have that on next week's agenda.
Okay. That'd be first to discuss.
And I think with the request that you're making, Mr. McFarland, Shane McFarland, Mayor McFarland.
We're all friends here.
There you go. With the suggestion that you're making, would you be considering paying employees based on what their current salary is? Or would you be open to the idea of taking that one lump sum and dividing it by the number of employees so that each, so that each employee would get the same benefit?
I, I think there's several different options, but mainly, I think, starting with, let's see what, let's see what the cost is.
That's what I'm saying, the cost would be the same way. I'm just thinking the next step down the road would be, how would you distribute that?
I think there's some tax ramifications, I would think there's some tax ramifications that we would also need to.
We're studying that hard right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that employees, that's an excellent way that we can show our appreciation. I think that's excellent.
Okay. Thank y'all. Any other items that need to come before the council?
Mayor, you might wanna have the reminder about the town hall meeting?
Yes. Town hall meeting this Sunday at two o'clock at Blackman United Methodist Church. So, we've talked about that we're gonna go to different spots around the, the city. I know Councilman Smotherman had worked on the one that was at downtown Oakland, so we're gonna do that this, this Sunday, two o'clock, Blackman United Methodist Church. Come one, come all. I appreciate the council, your, your hard work and dedication. I know this has been a tough meeting, especially with, you know, the first meeting without Doug being here. So, I think he would be proud. So, with that, we'll stand adjourned.